Motion Dr. Siddiqui seconded by Ms. Scrola, all in favor. Four zero, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is behind us. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, motion Mrs. Mammalito, second Dr. Siddiqui, all in favor, four zero. Dr. Bossert, I will lead this accommodations to you.
Thank you, Mr. Tomio, and thank you to the Board of Education for always allowing time to recognize the outstanding achievements of our students and faculty members during this portion of our favorite part of the meeting. And at this time, to assist me in recognizing some outstanding students, I'd like to call upon our high school leadership team, Mr. Corey McNamara and Ms. Trish Sixnell, to recognize some outstanding John Glenn High School students.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert, and good evening. Good evening, distinguished members of the Board of Education and our district administration, as well as our students and families in present today and that home that are watching. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Corey McNamara, and I'm the proud principal of John Glenn High School. Tonight, I have the absolute honor and privilege to recognize our valedictorian, James Rourke, and our salutatorian, Emily Lamena. Will the two of you please join me here at the podium as you represent the top two academic students at Elwood John Glenn High School for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year? I ask that you both join me, as there were mere hundreds of points that separated your final GPA, and when I look at both of you, I do see many similarities, and of course, some differences. Both Jimmy Lee and Emily have taken the most rigorous course load that we have to offer here at John Glenn. Jimmy will finish with ten AP courses, while Emily will finish with eleven, and both are still in the running for a perfect five average on all of their APs as they finish this school year. No pressure. For perspective, we offer twenty-one AP courses, so they will graduate after completing half of them. In addition, they both were enrolled in some of our dual enrollment courses as well. I would say that having close to a one hundred average while taking close to half of your high school credits on the college level is pretty rigorous and absolutely incredible. When meeting with both individually, however, it was not their academics that they wanted me to be the, share as their main focus today. Both are extremely proud of their athletic accomplishments over the years as well. Jimmy is an outstanding soccer player with a wicked throw-in, who earned all league and all conference status, and who was the second-leading goal scorer in the conference before his unfortunate injury this year. He is also county champion in track, and is a part of the team that currently holds the four-by-one-hundred school record. Emily is also an accredited athlete. Went on the track as a five-year varsity runner. She has earned all league, all division, all county, all region, all state, and all federation status, while also becoming a national qualifier and team MVP. Oh, and by the way, the year is far from over. Good luck tomorrow at States. Clearly, these two demonstrate that work ethic is truly a personality trait. Finally, Jimmy shared that his fondest memories over the years were from his work with Habitat for Humanities, not just with the builds, but with his work to gather cleaning supplies and donations for the families, earning his Eagle Scout honors, and recently working with his friend Jake in the Best Buddies Program. Emily shared that it was her reserved nature and behind-the-scenes work while helping others, such as with her volunteer work outside of school, her work with Community Service Club and Habitat for Humanities, and just helping out her younger siblings over the years like only a big sister can. That stands out most to her. Both are mature, humble, driven, grateful for the opportunities that their families have provided for them, and lead by example. Their resumes are lengthy, most of which I did not mention tonight, but as I am sure you can see, these two amazing young adults make us and their families very proud. I'm looking forward to getting to know each of you a little bit better over, as the year moves forwards. Congratulations, valedictorian Jimmy Rourke, and salutatorian Emily Lamena. I can't wait to see what you bring to the world. I'll just share also that, in addition on their certificate, typically, we also honor our National Merit semifinalist at this time, and sure enough, Jimmy and Emily have also been recognized as national semifinalist this year. Just so you're aware, the National Merit Scholarship Program selects those students who earn the highest scores on the PSATs. Only sixteen thousand nationwide earn the distinction of National Merit semifinalist, which represents less than one percent of the state's high school seniors. It's no surprise, like I said, that our two fine young adults are also national semifinalists, and now they are eligible to stay in the competition, to potentially earn merit scholarships, to be awarded in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. So congratulations once again. Next, I would like to recognize five John Glenn High School students who earned the National Hispanic Recognition Award from College Board this year. They are Angelina DeMarco, Juliana Brown, Jake Lauto, Juliette Buca, and Will Drucker. Please come to the podium and join me. As per College Board, which is the association that runs the PSAT, SAT, and all AP examinations, if you're not already aware, the National Recognition Program is designed to grant students from diverse backgrounds with academic honors that can be included on college and scholarship applications. This highlights students from universities across the country, helping them meaningfully connect to colleges and stand out during the admissions process. In order to be eligible for this specific recognition, students must have a GPA of three-point-five or higher, which is roughly a ninety, and have excelled on the PSAT, or earned a score of three or higher on two or more AP exams, and identify as Hispanic. Our five students of Hispanic heritage that stand here tonight clearly just meet the, excuse me, clearly just meeting the eligibility criteria as they did is an accomplishment in itself. But I did a little more digging, and I wanted to share how I believe our students will stand out even more during the admissions process. Collectively, the group has taken twenty AP and dual enrollment courses so far, averaging a four-point-oh-seven on those AP exams. This year, they are enrolled as a group in seventeen additional AP and dual enrollment courses. Clearly, the students tonight represent the very best that Elwood as a community has to offer. Congratulations to you, Angelina, Juliana, Jake, Juliette, and Will, and congratulations to your families.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, District Administration, parents, students, community members. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Trish Sixnell, and I'm one of the assistant principals at John Glenn High School. It is my honor to have the opportunity to recognize three outstanding young ladies this evening. Juliette Buca, Grace Mata, and Catherine Madrid were the proud recipients of the Town of Huntington Hispanic Heritage Student Achievement Award this year. Not only did these students earn an academic scholarship for their scholastic achievements, they were also presented with a proclamation from the Huntington Town Board, presented by Town Supervisor Edmund Smith. I was fortunate enough to attend their celebration at Town Hall last month, and was so proud to see this group of students representing John Glenn High School. The ceremony recognized students for their outstanding achievements and was presented in conjunction with the Hispanic Heritage Advisory Task Force. The evening featured students and community members with presentations in both Spanish and English that celebrated the achievements of so many inspiring Hispanic individuals right here in the town of Huntington. I'd like to share a bit about our three recipients. Juliette Buca is a self-motivated and eager-to-learn senior. She's currently studying in several AP classes. Juliette was just awarded the National Hispanic Recognition Award from the College Board for her outstanding achievement on AP examinations. Juliette is also an outstanding athlete. Last year, she attended the Suffolk County Section Eleven County Meet for Track and Field, and also participates in cheerleading. Juliette has been a part of the Community Service and International Clubs during her tenure at Glenn. She's part of the Freshman Buddies Program and a part of the Student Council. A side note to include that Juliette was named Homecoming Queen by her peers this year. Juliette is of Argentinian descent, and her goal is to study abroad in Spain. Congratulations, Juliette. Come up. Come join us, Juliette, yes. Vaya. The second recipient we'd like to recognize tonight is Catherine Madrid. Catherine is a hard-working and self-motivated senior. Throughout high school, she's been enrolled in various honors and AP courses. Catherine is involved in many extracurricular activities. She's part of the International Club, Freshman Buddies, Art Honor Society, World Language Honor Society, and Habitat for Humanity. She also tutors students in Spanish. Catherine is first-generation-born. Her parents are from El Salvador. She plans to attend college and to pursue a degree in architecture. Congratulations, Catherine. Come on up. Grace Mata was our third recipient of this award. Grace is an outstanding senior, and she has a course load filled with honors and AP classes. Grace is a part of the SAD Club, Habitat for Humanity, Freshman Buddies, Natural Helpers, International Club, National Art Honor Society, World Language, and National Honor Society. Grace is a scholar-athlete and part of the John Glenn High School Women's Soccer and Track Teams. Grace is also a volunteer at Comac Volunteer Ambulance. Grace is of Guatemalan descent. After graduation, she plans to attend a university where she would like to study medicine and to become a doctor. She hopes to work in a hospital where she can assist patients whose first language is not English. Come on up and accept your award, Grace. Congratulations to all of our recipients on this most prestigious award. It is without question that of the many students who applied for this scholarship, you three were amongst the most worthy. Thank you for all that you do on a regular basis to represent what it means to be a John Glenn High School student and an Elwood community member.
Congratulations, everybody. Really wonderful accomplishments, and what a great recognition this evening is for all of you, and it's just the beginning of what your academic careers are going to hold for you. So we look forward to watching you continue throughout our school year and to making Elwood proud and what the future holds for you post-John Glenn. With that, Mr. Rourke, we're up for our student liaison report this evening. In case you didn't get up here enough, I'll bring you one more time.
Good evening, everyone. From Harley to the high school, I'm happy to report that our schools have been filled with engaging activities and initiatives in the recent weeks, and have much more to come through the end of the month. Beginning at Harley Avenue, their first Knights Pep Rally was a success, and Halloween Day, with its parade and harvest festival, was enjoyed by all. Second graders have been helping with the morning announcements, and Harley is excited for literacy clubs to begin in the coming weeks and to start celebrating its Student of the Week Award as well. Additionally, students have two assemblies to look forward to before the Thanksgiving break, a Mad Science presentation this coming Monday, and Thanksgiving Music and Sounds of America the next week. Lastly, kindergartners are preparing for their Thanksgiving feast performance. Now on to Boyd, where the Halloween Parade was likewise a big hit with a very large parent turnout. Pretzel Wednesdays have been a student favorite, in large part due to PTA volunteers, as well as parent donations to include even more students in the weekly offering. Additionally, the October MVP celebration ushered in the program's first selected students, Elizabeth Arana, Casey Curran, and Arden Moshos. The next winners will be chosen at the end of November. Moreover, morning music practices and after-school clubs are going well, and Boyd is also looking forward to starting its literacy clubs this month. The middle school was very spirited through its Halloween activities, as both students and teachers alike had fantastic costumes, including some great group ideas, like the seventh-grade Blue Team teachers pulling off a Top Gun theme. In addition, the first Elwood Recognition Award Breakfast, the ERA Breakfast, of the year, will take place on Friday, the eighteenth. It will honor students not necessarily for high achievement, but for hard work, a positive attitude, improvement, cooperation, enthusiasm, and overall character. Also, EMS is working on stocking its food pantry for Thanksgiving and the rest of the holiday season, as well as looking forward to its first EOLNEL Thanksgiving celebration since the beginning of the pandemic. This celebration will also be held at the end of the month. John Glenn High School saw many successful events in the past weeks, including its Fall Spirit Week, homecoming activities including varsity football's thirty-four-to-nothing win over Port Jeff, Newsday's marching band festival held in late October, and the senior class breakfast held last Friday, November fourth. Our October Students of the Month were Alicia Gonzalez, Braden Clement, Nina Abrencia, and Greg DiCembre from grades nine through twelve, respectively, and the entire Social Studies Department is this month's Nobel Knight. On a separate note, updated club and activity charters have been posted on the school website. JGHS is continuing its partnership with the Anti-Defamation League to earn the distinction as a No Place for Hate school again for the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three school year, and please reach out to Mr. McNamara if you are interested in participating in the ADL monthly meetings to collaborate on building-level initiatives. To help students through the college application process, the Counseling Department is holding writing workshops in the library during lunch periods. And on an academic note, the first quarter is ending tomorrow. For our postseason athletes, best of luck to the varsity football team in their playoff game tomorrow against Kings Park, and Emily Lamena, who will be running at the New York State Cross Country Meet this Saturday. Lastly, I would like to thank, I would like to congratulate my fellow high school students for being recognized for their class rank, for their success in the National Merit Scholarship Program, and as Town of Huntington Hispanic Heritage Scholarship Award winners. Thank you all for your time, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
As always, Jimmy, wonderful job. Thank you very much for the update. And Dr. Bossert, do you want to tell the students the great news?
Your homework assignment is to bon voyage, have a wonderful evening. We thank you so much for joining us, and you've done such a wonderful job, we'd like you to take tomorrow off as well. Happy Veterans Day to you all. If you would care to depart, now would be an appropriate time to do so. You don't have to go, but you may.
Congratulations, Mr. Scrola and Malondo St. Huh?
No one wants to hear from you, elementary principals.
Well, before that, Dr. Bossert, we're up to your superintendent's report.
Mr. McNamara, Ms. Sixnell, we know you have an early morning today as well. If you choose to depart, you have fulfilled your obligations as well. Denise and Alice, I apologize. As part of the superintendent's report, I'm going to yield the majority of my time to Mr. Scrola and Dr. Siddiqui, who are going to brief the board and community about their experiences at the NISBA convention. But I did want to give the board and community, both those present and those who are watching remotely, a bit of an update on our safety focus. I think, following the tragic events in Uvalde this past May, every school district really needed to reaffirm their conviction and focus on safety within our schools. It is clear that our students and faculty cannot work on student achievement and academics if they don't feel physically safe and cared for in the school environment. So we have always been focused on safety within the Elwood School District, but I think that that tragedy was a reminder that we can't disrupt our vigilance and focus. So we've been doing a lot to make sure that we're hardening our systems and emphasizing the appropriate protocols that are followed each day. I thank the members of the board who serve on our safety committee that Ms. Dunkle facilitates for helping to continue the conversations. And one of the ideas that was born of that committee that the administration has certainly embraced and is following through is the discussion of having a community forum to focus on safety. Recently, on October the twenty-fourth, the day that our students were celebrating Di Valli, we held a successful professional development workshop for all students, I'm sorry, for all faculty and staff, where we were focused on both physical safety and social, emotional, literacy, and mental health aspects. And in the morning, we partnered with Suffolk County Police Department, where representatives from Homeland Security Division of Suffolk County and Emergency Preparedness took our staff through emergency response in situations, including active shooter. And it's unfortunate that these are things we need to talk about, but we need to talk about them, and we did that very deliberately and in a focused manner. I was impressed with both the presentation that the police department made to our staff, but also the serious nature in which our staff embraced the message. And I think one of the things that was made clear during that workshop is that Elwood is following the recommended protocols and procedures that those who are charged with keeping us safe recommend. Further from that workshop and continuing our partnership with law enforcement, the board has recently authorized Suffolk County Police Department to come in and to do an audit of all of our security procedures, to make sure that we have the utmost in safety in mind through all of our practices, our infrastructure, our surveillance, and we're anxious to hear of any areas where law enforcement feels we can improve, and we will invest the time and resources necessary to make those improvements once they've been identified. Our staff was also briefed from EMT Jason Byron, who did a wonderful job, along with Officer McVeigh, of he focused on the opioid epidemic and specifically fentanyl's presence on Long Island. What I learned that day, and I didn't know before, is that heroin really doesn't exist on the street anymore in this region. And when we talk about opioids, we're talking about fentanyl. And the dose of fentanyl that is necessary to be deadly is so minute that there are people, children dying on the first time they're exposed to fentanyl. And it's something that we need to make sure we're educating our students about, our parents and community about, and our faculty and staff was certainly brought valuable information, including being trained in the use of Narcan, which can, which is a wonderful drug that can reverse the effects of an opioid overdose. And I want the board to know that each of our school nurse offices and each of our AEDs are now equipped with Narcan kits, so there's never Narcan far from someone who might be suffering an overdose. While we are very thankful that we haven't had to use them, it is a blanket of safety to know they're there. This is something that we're targeting training to bring to parents. I recently sent a list of workshops that are available through Suffolk County Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, to our PTA leaders and asked them to provide feedback on what they felt would be of greatest value. Every workshop is valuable. But when we're trying to prioritize, I asked the PTA leadership to help us define what they think would be best received and most attended by parents. So I'm waiting for their feedback, and we're going to go ahead and schedule a safety forum for our community in January, early February, after the holiday season passes. In the afternoon, we did some wonderful work. Dr. Moran and the team at the middle school facilitated a discussion that runs back to each of our buildings and each of our principals, two of which are with us tonight, helped to facilitate important discussions with their faculty to make sure we're continuing to focus on the social and emotional wellness of all of our students. There's a lot of recovery that needs to be done post-pandemic, and there's a lot of recovery that needs to happen through normal adolescence. So we want our teachers and staff to be attuned to the challenges our students are facing and really keep a watchful eye on those who might be struggling. One of the activities that took place had great value, where the students' names were literally listed alphabetically, and teachers and staff members were charged with placing a dot next to students they felt they had a personal connection with. And then the team evaluated the students who had fewer or no dots, and immediately began to come up with strategies for making sure those students were identified and relationships with trusted adults could be formed. Our instructional support teams met to discuss those students, and we really looked at patterns for why some students had many dots while others seemed to lack, and see if we could notice trends that we were able to address to make sure that all students feel included and connected. And I thought that was a very valuable activity, and the follow-up that's taken place since has brought benefit to our students on an immediate basis. We also haven't forgotten about cyber safety and awareness. We are in the midst of celebrating Cyber Safety Awareness Month. You may have read in news today that one of our neighbors close by the Comac School District suffered a ransomware attack that disrupted their network systems within the district, and it could happen to anyone. So we want to make sure, again, with use of our district equipment, there's vigilance on the part of our users. Mr. Tranquino, Ms. Hanley, who is with us tonight, and the technology team have really been at the forefront of educating users electronically about the safety of internet use. And there was recently a test given to our units, our user subscribers, where a phishing email was sent. It looked authentic. It looked like it was sent from the Elwood Technology Department, but it wasn't. And the challenge was to see what percentage of our users would click and then subject the district to an exposure. The good news is, is that ninety-eight percent of our staff deleted the email and did not click. Bad news is, two percent did. Until we can get that number to zero, we will continue to educate, practice, test, and drill to make sure everyone has a full understanding of internet and cyber safety. We will also be hosting forums and workshops for students about cyber safety in the coming weeks and months. So that's where we are. So that's where we are. We ask our community, we ask our students to continue to be aware and preach, see something, say something. It is amazing to me how many challenges we can address just with the reporting that goes on. Our students have become more attuned to trusting adults to help them to address issues. And it's been the work of the administration, our PPS team, that when an outside issue comes in that impacts students' comfort and safety that they feel in school, that it becomes our job to address it. It's a big job, but it's part of our responsibility and I need to credit our students and our faculty for following see something, say something, and our students for sometimes having uncomfortable conversations that help to keep us all safe. Unless there are any questions from the board, that concludes my safety update. With that, I will yield the remainder of the superintendent's report. We were fortunate, this Board of Education has demonstrated on multiple occasions that they invest into the professional development of our, of our faculty, our staff, the administration, and themselves. And recently, the board was given an opportunity to send representation to Syracuse for the annual New York State School Boards Convention, which is intended by school board members and superintendents and district office officials from across the state of New York, where some of the best resources in education come together to really celebrate public education. I was unable to attend. Dr. Siddiqui and Mr. Skrola very capably represented the Elwood School District and I understand you have an update to provide tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bossert. Good evening, everyone, members of the board, Dr. Bossert, administration, and members of our community. I am so extremely thankful for the opportunity to attend the New York State School Board Conference held in Syracuse from October twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth, and I really would like to extend my sincere gratitude to my fellow board members as well as the community for sending us. The NISBA conference was very well attended by school boards from around the state. It had been held virtually for the past few years, so everyone present was extremely appreciative of the in-person gathering, so much so that the event theme was NISBA Together Again. I was so thankful for meeting so many people that all have a similar goal, improving the lives of our students, schools, and community. I want to share with you some of the specific conferences that I was able to attend. I think one of the hardest tasks about the NISBA conference is figuring out which conferences to attend because they were all, some of them were all going on at the same time and you can only be at one place at one time. So there was many, many different, different awesome conferences to choose from. So some of the conferences that I wanted to share with you, one of the first ones that I attended was called Whole Child Learning: Holistic Approaches to Education. Members of the community from the West Arandaqua Central School District gave a thoughtful presentation of the factors that can play a role in creating a robust school environment. One of the models of learning discussed was the Thornburg modality where students learn in different environments, cave, watering hole, campfire, and life. And I have a feeling all our staff and administrators are probably well aware of this concept, but it was really new for me and I was really excited by it. I was also pleased to see that our district was also incorporating some of these tools, such as the Sensory and Learning Center at Harley and the different furniture setups that we have in all, some of our classrooms and our new cafeterias. Another great discussion was about resilience and mental health in schools. The moderators discussed factors that affect student ability to be able to learn. There was an in-depth analysis on the multiple reasons that impact our learners, along with those that provide the learning, and how important it is to be aware of external as well as internal factors that impact education of our children and the adults that are educating them. The end of day one was marked by an amazing presentation by Frank Wayne, who gave a fantastic performance during the welcome ceremony that was rooted in a deep legacy of indigenous storytelling through song and creative expression. It was, I must tell you, it was absolutely amazing. Day two activities were numerous as well. Supporting social emotional learning through trauma-informed coaching was another amazing presentation. I learned that it's so important to support our adult learners and provide multiple modalities of support in order to support, in order for them to support our students. This was by far an amazing conference. I also attended a proactive policy management to create transparency and I was hoping Debbie would be here, Mrs. Weiss would be here, so I could discuss that with her, but I learned so much on that conference as well. That was run by the NISBA Policy Committee. But one of the more amazing, all of them, all of them were amazing. I can't even tell you that it was every single one, I learned so much. But one of the conferences that I attended was a presentation by a district that actually I grew up in, but in upstate New York, and they brought students to present with their board and their superintendent. And they each had, they each delivered thought, problem and solution within their school community. So they were tasked with, and this was over a period of a year that they worked on this, a year and a half, and they were tasked with an objective to try to improve their school community. So two of the students talked about how to incorporate English language learners more, more into the school system and they came up with different ways that they would incorporate them by, for example, making sure that they had a seat at the table, making sure that they were, they had a separate place on their website, so they improved their own school district website to include these students in their, in their initiative. And one of the other two students wanted to improve some of the policies about what, what topics were taking place or what topics were being discussed in schools, and they even went as far as going to the Board of Ed meeting to try to update their policy to incorporate different modalities of teaching. And one of the students actually said at the end of that conference, because I think it was still being discussed and it hadn't quite come to fruition yet, and they said in the conference and they were discussing with their board member and superintendent, saying that we, we are hopeful that this comes to pass, but if it doesn't, we're hopeful that we can sit down and come to a consensus and an agreement with the policy change. So I thought these were high school twelfth graders that were saying this. It was so amazing. There was so much more that, you know, I don't want to take up too much more time, but I just wanted to share one more tool that I already shared with James and Dr., Mr. Tomio and Dr. Bossert, but I'll send it to you guys as well. It was an amazing, so this was at the expo. So the expo is like this whole conference, this whole other area that had so many great things about what you can use to improve your schools. So it had like things that you can, I guess, products that you can buy for your school district. And one of the most amazing things was this table called an animatage table. And what this is, I wish I had this when I was going to medical school because basically what it is, is a computerized table that has a cadaver, like they basically have an ability to identify and dissect a human cadaver. They also have animal modalities as well, but it's basically these people who donated their bodies to science, which they do when they, when you have human cadavers that medical students dissect in, in medical schools. But this was a computerized version where you could see different ways and different techniques to identify each part of the body. I mean, I can't explain it well because, so I had a video sent, but I couldn't put it up, but we will try to put a picture up. But it was just, it was just amazing and I'm hoping that we get that in our school. So that was my push for that.
Well, Dr. Siddiqui, if I could just interject for a moment. I made sure that our curriculum team and our building leaders were aware of that device because I thought it was pretty cool, too. They were well aware of it and it's something that is certainly on the wish list for the school district. The seventy-five dollar, seventy-five thousand dollar price tag is slowing us down a bit.
A bit, okay.
But it's definitely on the wish list within the High School Science Department.
So yes, thank you again for this amazing opportunity. I'd like to thank my board for, you know, allowing us to go and of course, the community for making this possible for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I also, the animatage table, we have one in my district and it's, it's amazing. So hopefully one day we can get it. Once again, I'm very grateful that I got to also attend the conference with Ms. Siddiqui. She was a great travel partner. We got to explore Syracuse together. We met a lot of the local vendors. We were so excited to be there. We got there three hours before the conference started, so, you know, we just walked around and really embraced the city and it was a wonderful experience. I'm very grateful to the community, to my board members, to the district for sending us, and also to Ms. Marx, who arranged everything for us impeccably. So please, I'm forever grateful. Without you, I don't know if I'd be able to figure my way around Syracuse. Some of the highlights Sarah and I kind of divided and conquered, so we didn't go to the same thing, so we can bring back as much knowledge as we can to the district. One thing I did attend was how, NISBA advocacy, how as a board we can advocate for policy changes. And I learned that NISBA has its own website where they already have pre-made letters and as board members and as a community members, you can go online, add your name and send it, and it goes to all the local officials. Right now, NISBA has a free lunch for all students across New York State. So if you go to the NISBA website, under advocacy, the letter's already made, you add your name and you just send it and it goes to, you know, Governor Hochul and all our local politicians, which I thought was great. So I shared that with our policy committee. I think that's something we can use moving forward to advocate for students and for the community. I also attended another amazing event where two school districts, Peak Skill and Osing, came together for the common cause of helping students and they got a grant for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and they used the money to create programs based on equity for all students. They actually bought an old firehouse in the middle of the town and they made it a community center. And every student that enrolled, it was the place to go. There was no going to district office. All the students went there. It was great for parents. They ran adult ed at night. So it was really nice to see other school districts working together. That's something we might want to look at, reaching out to our local area school districts if there's something we can do to help the community and to help all of our students. We had an amazing keynote speaker, Ms. Marley Matlin, who is an Academy Award-winning actress. She is a deaf person who is deaf and she was amazing. She was engaging the entire time. I, I, it's hard for me to pay attention and I didn't miss a beat. She talked about how she had a lot of struggles in her life and it was the people that lifted her up. And one of them, which I never knew, was Henry Winkler, the Fonz. Met her randomly in her town, embraced her and really helped her on her journey to becoming an actress. And she talks about how the people helped her get to where she is and she still faces struggles today. She was offered a part to be a judge, a non-hearing judge, and she said, oh, the judge needs an interpreter. And the producer said, no, we're not doing that. And she refused the role. So she's still advocating for people who are hard of hearing and she really inspired me to come back here and really work to help all students and all community members in a town that I grew up in and I love so much. Then I attended another one. This was a tough one. It was the Uvalde debrief. The officers that responded to Uvalde came and spoke to us about all the things that went wrong on that day, if there's any silver linings on a terrible, terrible day in our country. They shared with us things we might be able to do to prevent this and I'm, I chaired the safety committee with Mr. Tomio and Ms. Dunkle. So I shared all the information with everybody and hopefully when we have our safety forum and we have our evaluation, hopefully we hit all the marks. I'm pretty confident in our district. It was a tough one to sit through, but it was very eye-opening and hopefully, you know, this doesn't happen again. So that was very eye-opening. I met some amazing students. They had performers from all around the state. We had an orchestra, we had a chorus. It was just nice to see young, smiling faces. We also very lucky, unfortunately, Dr. Bossert could not make it, but he left us in good hands with the Hampton Bay staff, the superintendent, and their board took good care of us. It was really nice to meet other board members. I met board members from all around the state, Long Island, from Sayosa, Jericho, Hicksville, Satrum, and Elmont, to name a few. Some of the board members were unbelievable. I met this one woman, I'll never forget, she's a board member in Buffalo and she just gets stuff done. She went to the Buffalo Bills and said, you need to come to my school. And she got the Buffalo Bills to come to her school and help students that were struggling financially. So if anything, I left the conference feeling rejuvenated about my commitment to helping all students and community members of Elwood because I did grow up here and I do love it. And I think we're doing a great job, but we can always do better. There was amazing vendors there. We learned about electric buses. We saw some amazing things. There's one thing that I really liked, I met a student, they have a class called Virtual Enterprises. It's a class you can take in high school where it is a authentic student experience. They actually create their own business from the ground up. They pick a CEO, a CFO, and they compete in competitions all across the state and globally. I would love to see a class like that come to John Glenn someday because nothing's better than giving students an authentic experience. So I met some students that loved being in that class. So all in all, it was an amazing, amazing conference. I'm very grateful that I got to go and I met so many wonderful people and, you know, moving forward, it just rekindled my love for this community and I can, I hope to do whatever I can do to help all students and all community members. So once again, thank you, everybody, and I'm just very appreciative.
Thank you both for a robust update on what took place. It was clearly beneficial to you and it's something Ms. Bombilio and myself and Mrs. Weiss and including Dr. Bossert have partaked in and we love it as much as you do and you feel the same way when you leave there. You meet people, you network, you find out new resources, you come back and hit the ground running. So thank you both for engaging that opportunity and bringing back what you've learned. We look forward to coupling all together and improving the district and making sure we take what you do and turnkey it into Elwood because that's the benefit of going there is to glean the knowledge and run with it. So thank you both and yeah, Ms. Marx, I wish you would plan my vacations when I go away because it is literally step by step. So I, I understand what you mean when you say that. With that, we are up to our first residence remarks this evening. Any residents wishing to speak? We're good. Thank you, Ms. Ruckel, for being here this evening. Good to see you. All right, that brings us up to our presentation this evening. We have an elementary I-Ready and academic progress update from our principal, I gotta get this right now, our principal from Boyd, Mrs. Milan, and our principal from Harley, Mrs. Scannell. Welcome and both, thank you for being here this evening. Dr. Scannell, excuse me, thank you, Ms. Bombilio, and Dr. Hall.
As Dr. Hall walks to the podium, this is the point where I typically steal what she's going to say as an introduction, so I'm going to refrain from doing so tonight and just thank Dr. Scannell, Mrs. Milan, Dr. Hall, and the other members of the curriculum team for putting together what is a very robust review of one of the multiple measures we use within the district to evaluate student progress. And with that, Dr. Hall.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Bossert, administration, and community. Thank you for this opportunity to come back to you, to speak to you again about the progress of our students post-pandemic. We have been using the I-Ready program now for a few years. The program was brought into our district through the collaboration of our Academic Intervention Services Committee. We have made many presentations about student progress and we're often using data that is more qualitative in nature. And one of the goals of our I-Ready program was to have a quantitative measure that would allow us to say, in addition to the excellent data collection that our teachers do on a regular basis, the anecdotal notes, the programs like Fontes and Pennell, we now have an additional program that is quantitative that allows us to not only measure growth, but to also discuss how our students are doing as compared to their peers across the country. And one of the reasons why our AIS committee was looking for a, a new product like this was because the state exams were becoming less reliable in order for us to gain information about having confidence that our students were on track and making progress at a good rate. So I welcome Dr. Scannell and Mrs. Milan, thank you for joining me for this discussion. So when we brought the program in, it was right before the pandemic, about the nineteen, twenty year. So we didn't get to have a full assessment. We had a fall and a spring, but in the spring we were closed and so we weren't able to do it. Then the following year, we were hybrid, we had some students at home. And so students took the test either in school or at home. That happened not only in Elwood, but nationally, and that impacted the results. So last year was the first time that we were able to say we had a fall, winter, and spring administration and the only scores that we were using were the tests, take, tests that were taken in school. So it really was a great time for us to establish a baseline. And I came to you in March to give you an update on how things have been going from the fall to the winter administration. So this evening, I'm now here to show you how the whole year turned out. So we're looking at fall to June and I'm hoping that we can establish a pattern where in around this time of year, we're able to look at what happened the prior year and really get that picture from fall to spring. Yeah, thank you. So just a reminder that I-Ready is computer adaptive. So what that means is that all of the students begin with the same exact questions for that grade level and then depending on if they get the answer correct or incorrect, the next question will change. If the question's incorrect, they're going to get a slightly less challenging question for their next question and as they're scoring answers correctly, then they're going to receive slightly more challenging questions. So the goal is to try to really get to the accurate point of growth for each child. One of the things I mentioned when I was here in March is that I-Ready is not exactly like other tests that we've discussed. So it's not that we teach a particular curriculum and then we give a test to see what the mastery is. I-Ready is growth-oriented. So it's looking at end-of-year standards. So even in the fall, students are tested on end-of-year standards and they use domains and subskills to tune into each of the standard strands in ELA and math. And the goal- And the goal is to give really precise information for teachers. Its number-one purpose is to be an instructional tool. We're using it for comparison, because it also has that ability, but its main power is the precision that it provides for teachers and the many reports and tools available. So we're going to begin by taking a look at our math, math data. So what we see here is a comparison of the June administration for 2022 of our Elwood students as compared to all the students in the country in grades K through eight who took I-Ready last June, which is approximately eight million students. And then it's a comparison to the pre-pandemic norm from the eighteen, 2018 school year. Once again, I-Ready uses a five-color system to report out on how students are, what level of proficiency they are at. So it starts with a dark red, these are students that are performing far below grade level. Then there is a light color red, and these are students that are not yet approaching end-of-year. They might be slightly below that grade level. The yellow are the students who are approaching the end of year. And what's important to remember with I-Ready is that it's not that mastery test saying you got this many number correct. It is looking at different domains, and so within those domains, you could be, a student could have achieved proficiency in some domains, but not yet on proficiency in others, and so they end up in yellow. But I-Ready likes us to remember that students who are in yellow could be in the green in some areas. And the light color green, this is early on, these are students who are at the beginning of meeting their end-of-grade level, and the dark green is on and exceeding their end-of-grade level. So what we see here is that K through eight, our proficiency of our students was at fifty-four percent, the national was at forty-seven percent, and the pre-pandemic was at fifty-nine percent. So first of all, we, it was very encouraging for us to know that we outperformed the national population of students at such a good rate. And we see that we are not that far off from the pre-pandemic norm. So taken as a whole, we see and can take away the sense that our students are making good progress. And I really just want to take a moment to thank all of our school community for that, because I really think that's a function of our students working so hard, the support of their parents, the hard work and dedication of our teachers, our administration, our board, our staff. I think, you know, it's, I, I'm really proud that we can be outperforming the national population and know that our students are making growth to get back to pre-pandemic levels. I don't think anyone would expect that our students would not have gaps, because the closure of school, the hybrid learning of school, the impact of the pandemic on social and emotional wellness has an impact on students across the board. We see that nationally and internationally. But it's very encouraging to know that our students are making steady growth. So let's talk about that growth. So the next slide takes a look at the change just for our Elwood students from the fall to the spring. There was tremendous growth for our students overall in grades K through eight. When we compare the two, we see that in the fall, we were at eighteen percent of students at on early or exceeding end-of-year standards, and that increased to fifty-four percent. Now that's an increase of thirty-six points. If we were to look at it as a percentage of growth, it's really almost two-hundred percent growth. There was tremendous growth occurring. And then we have the opportunity to take a look at what that looks like by grade level. Now this, this once again gives us that comparison between Elwood, national, and then pre-pandemic. And it also provides you with the number of students across the country who took the exam, as well as in districts. So you'll see for kindergarten, we had a hundred and twenty-seven students take the test here in the district. That's this number here. And then over here, you see that nationally, there were eight-hundred-and-eight-six-thousand. And then, of course, the norm brings us back to that 2018 pre-pandemic. So when we look at all these numbers, we know that we have three grade levels that actually not only outperformed national, but they either met or exceeded the pre-pandemic levels. And to me, that is astounding, because we know there are gaps. We know that our students have to make up some areas of instruction that could not be provided as diligently when school was closed. So it's very encouraging to know that our students are making very good progress. So, you know, briefly, as you're looking at the numbers, I know some of them are hard to read. Our kindergarten class was at seventy-three percent proficiency. And this is one of the reasons why I think a comparison is so important. So we know at national was at sixty-four, pre-pandemic was seventy-three. Our first grade was at sixty-six percent, with national at forty-eight, and our pre-pandemic at fifty-eight. So when you look at this number, you might, your first reaction might be, oh, well, kindergarten was at seventy-three. But when you look at first grade and you look at that comparison, where national's at forty-eight and Elwood is at sixty-six, you see a, a really strong outperformance of the national result. And these data points are important, because we look at them very deeply from, with our administration, in our I-Ready training, working with our teachers in the curriculum office. They help guide where we apply our resources. Our second grade was at fifty-four percent, with national at forty-six, and with pre-pandemic at fifty-seven. Slightly below pre-pandemic and above national. Last year's third grade class was at forty-eight percent, with national at forty-eight and pre-pandemic at sixty-two. So now when we see forty-eight, this raises a question, what does this mean? Because it's a very different number than the other grade levels. Then when we look at national, like, oh, national's at forty-eight also. Now, we did not outperform national to the same degree as some of the other grade levels, but it lets us know that there is something that is occurring with that exam, not just for our students, but across the country. And that's where that comparison really helps us. And also, that is the grade level that was in first grade when we closed school. And first grade is such a critical year of acquisition of skills. So it's, again, it's guiding us to where we have to put additional resources. Last year's fourth grade was at sixty-two percent, national at forty-seven, and the pre-pandemic at sixty-seven, again, just below pre-pandemic, outperforming national. And our fifth grade was at sixty-nine percent, national at forty-six, pre-pandemic at sixty-two. So again, very strong in comparison. Now we wanted to look a little deeper at the students that we know are at risk, at the students that we know are struggling. And so here we are comparing our overall K-8 with our English language learners and our economically disadvantaged. I-Ready does not have any comparison data for subgroups. The reason that they don't is because not every school district reports the demographics of their test takers. So they could not provide us any comparison nationally, nor could they provide us a, a norm for that, because they simply don't have that database of demographic data. So here, we're looking at our own student performance. We see that of our English langu-, English language learners, we had thirteen percent in green, with a large percentage, forty-seven percent in yellow. Now, the first thing that comes to my mind is that a student is qualifying for English language programs because they are not proficient in English, and they are not at grade level. So to some degree, I-Ready is not going to be the best tool to assess their knowledge or their growth. Now, we have the test from New York State for our English language learners, and the New York State ESL assessment, the NICE slot. And so that is a test that we use more closely and more carefully to determine the progress the students are making. And once a student reaches proficiency, they're going to be exiting that program. So then we would expect to see a stronger performance on the I-Ready exam. The next group that we are looking at is economically disadvantaged, which is at thirty-six percent. And this, again, is aligned to nationwide concerns about the impact of poverty on education and learning, and what are the things that we do to help support that. And for example, our principals will be talking about some of our programs, but it might be something like the book baggies and the books that we send home that go home so that students have materials at home. It's the kind of things like investing in the Envision Math Program through our federal grant that has support for parents at home. So there, there's a lot of pieces that go into consideration of how you support a demographic group and being aware of that demographic and how to help them. Now, when I look at the changes, our Ls went from one percent in the fall to the thirteen percent in the spring, and our economically disadvantaged students went from seven percent in the fall to thirty-six percent. I just put the point increase in, in the table there, so you would get a sense of the growth. Because the largest part of I-Ready is growth, it's not the proficiency that we're looking at tonight. It's how they give a, a growth target, a typical growth, and a stretch growth for every child. So that's where a lot of the work is with the personal learning platform, which our principals will talk about a little bit. And so we are pleased to see these populations of students showing growth. And, and as many cases, it's the same student that might be in both categories, so students count more than once. But we also know that this is an area where we have to put resources and support, which the principals will be discussing. So now we'll take a look at the exact same data for our reading program. So of course, we begin once again with comparing Elwood to K-8 national and pre-pandemic. And in this case, we see that overall, Elwood students achieved fifty-eight percent proficiency this past June, and that compared to fifty-one percent nationally and fifty-seven percent pre-pandemic. So in math, we were five points away from the pre-pandemic, in this case, we surpassed it. This is very positive statement about the growth of our students in their English Language Arts program. And I do think it also speaks to the continuity of our program. This year, we, we selected a new math program, so I'm hoping to see that reflected in math results as we go forward. Here, we're looking at the impact of the fact that we've been part of the Teachers College Program for a while with adjustments, with enhancements, which our principals will touch on as well. So now, when we look at what happened with our own Elwood students without the comparison, we see that in the fall, we were at thirty-five percent, and then in the spring, we were at sixty-one percent. So that represents a difference of twenty-six. So again, I'm saying there were twenty-six points change. If we were to do a percentage of growth, it's actually seventy-four percent growth. And that is at the heart of this program to measure student growth. Then we take a look at the breakdown of our grade levels. In this case, we had five grade levels outperforming pre-pandemic. Again, the strength of the programs, the work of our students, our teachers, our community, our system, providing a way to address what we know is very real, there are gaps in student education. And this is one of multiple measures. We look at other measures as well, because we know this is one way of looking at student progress, but we want to examine others. So we are pleased to see the large margin in some cases of the strength and to know that our Academic Intervention Services Program are working effectively to help address those gaps. So I can, should I go through the individual numbers, or you're, you're good with? I mean, I have them if you want to hear them. So, and here are our subgroups in reading. So our English language learners were at one percent, I have the wrong number there, I'm sorry, in the fall. And here we see they are at twenty-three percent, so there was a twenty-two point increase. And our economically disadvantaged students were at twenty percent in the fall, and the spring now, they are at forty-five percent proficiency. So once again, it's the same message as with our math program. It's focused, focused intervention, academic intervention, and other areas of student growth, because as we say with many of our DEI presentations and our social and emotional learning programs, that academic success sits on the shoulders of students who feel comfortable, confident, welcome, and secure. So it, it's also a wide range of approaches to try to help the students to close the gap. And at this point, I'd like to ask Dr. Tiscano and Mrs. Milan to take us through the progress update.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, thank you for having us present tonight.
And I am the principal at Boyd, and she is the principal at Harley, although sometimes we can't get it right. Wrong way.
So before we begin, that was a really comprehensive presentation on analyzing data. And it was a lot of stuff to read. In addition to that, we take multiple data in all sorts of areas in our school. And what we try to do when we look at this, this is the hard data, but then we also look at the soft data, which is the anecdotal notes, and that's where we can see, person to person, what's going on with, with a student, so that we can address the whole child. Mrs. Milan will go over the data that we do collect.
So some things that we collect. We're looking at phonics data in K to two, but now we're also looking at it in grades three to five, because we understand that students' phonics and phonemic awareness is still important in grades three, four, and five. So we're looking at that. We're looking at letters and sounds in kindergarten and even through first grade. We're looking at our New York State math and ELA assessments. We're looking at the I-Ready data, our Fontes and Pennell tracking sheets. We're still looking at those on a trimester basis, basically, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. For math, we're looking at fluency data, we're looking at unit assessments, and of course, our anecdotal notes. Again, wrong way. And so this is our RTI pyramid. And tier-one intervention typically takes place in the classroom. And so we're looking at all of that data, and through our IST meetings and meetings with teachers and meetings with our AIS providers, we're figuring out what type of intervention and how the intervention is going to work for each individual student. And so when you look at tier-two, it's a little bit more targeted. Tier-two intervention can take place in the classroom, and it also can take place out of the classroom. It's just a research-based program. Sorry. So tier-two is a research-based, and then tier-three intervention is when our tier-one and tier-two interventions need more, our children need more support, we will put them in smaller groups and possibly even for a higher frequency. So they can go five times a week in a smaller group. Our AIS groups currently are somewhere between thirty-five and forty-five students per grade level receiving AIS in reading and in math. But our groups are always flexible, and they can change over time.
So now that we've explained to you the data that we collect, how we use the response to intervention chart, we wanted to go back and flip back to the I-Ready data that you read. We use that data and all the other data that we collected. And each student is given time, really four times a week, of immediate I-Ready instruction that is individualized for them during the week in reading and in math. But the overall picture, oh, you skipped a slide. Did you? Yeah. Yes. So what we want to know, the overall that we do is we do three times a year. We actually do a diagnostic and go through to see the growth. At that time, I-Ready is an intuitive program, so it already reads where the students are, and it allows us to give them a differentiated program based on their achievement on the test. In addition, the teacher can also use the diagnostic reports from the three times a year, but also look at their success that they're doing during the day in their individual platform. Then, this intuitive, wonderful program also takes all of that information and then gives instructional groups to the teachers, as well as provides the teachers with, with teachers' toolboxes that provide different strategies to address what each of those groups need. In addition, three times a year, the parent report is posted on the parent portal. This allows the parent to see growth and see where their students are in reading and math. Now let's look to how we implement it through the classroom. So again, students are given, they're, they're given I-Ready four times a week. Twice, they do reading, twice, they do math. This program, again, is geared specifically to their skill set. This program, again, is geared specifically to their skill set. It encourages participation. Not only are the students listening and actually working with the questions, but they're also interactive, which is really nice. And in addition, the students can also track their time that they're working and their progress on iReady. As teachers, they can look back and see the minutes that students are working during the week to make sure that we've optimized the sweet spot for growth. The sweet spot really is between thirty and forty minutes. And then, as building leaders, we can also look at the entire school to see how long they work and their success, and then go by classroom, and then even mine all the way down to each student. This is an example of the fact that you see that it's differentiated. So this is the same class at the same time during their iReady lessons on their computer. But if you'll notice, one student, you'll see there's text, pictures, and a graphic organizer. The other student probably is a lot more advanced, so there's only text there on the screen. And then you'll see the third student has a graphic organizer to assist them. So they're obviously all at different levels, and the program is meeting them at where they need to be met. This, of course, is an example of a parent report. Now, I really can't see it from this far, but I can tell you what I've learned from before. So if you look in the fall, I think the number is five ninety-seven, but I can't see it from here. However, now we wait three months, January comes the diagnostic, that children has, that child has gone up twenty-eight points. So the parent can see the growth score, they can see that the child's in the green, and they can also go through and decipher it by category to the left, where it says phonics, or it says high-frequency words, or comprehension. And then, we just didn't want you to think that we only give iReady.
And we only collect data. So we do something with the data. And, you know, one thing that Dr. Hall touched on, and Mrs. Valley is going to speak more at a later board meeting, is about our new Envisions math curriculum. There are very many components to this program that are wonderful. The students are engaged, there are videos that go with the program to hit learners that can require video intervention, there are small group components to the program, and I think that the students are really enjoying it. Plus, we're also engaging in professional development, which is supporting our teachers, supporting the students. We, let's see, there are parent links, and there are letters that can go home to the parents, as well as homework helpers along with the program. We have enhanced the spelling program in third grade, so we realize that students need to use phonics and phonemic awareness in their spelling, not just in their reading. They also need it in their writing, so we've enhanced that for third grade. In addition, our, for Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, we are continuing with our professional development and our units, our book lists, and our phonics work. We've ordered in K-2 new decodable books.
If you look at the Science of Reading, they have now stated that we need not only to do comprehension, but phonics. So now, we are actually implementing decodable books along with the leveled readers. So not only will students be reading on levels and growing, but they will also be learning their phonics skills, and will also be assessing that by CBC, CVCE, and so on. In addition, if you look on the bottom there, Foundations is also a phonics program, but it's really geared towards our special education and AIS population. That is a researched intervention program that'll be a double-dose support for our students who need more work with phonics.
We also have a staff developer in Science this year. Her name is Emily Kang, and she is supporting our staff to add the next-generation standards, which is a more hands-on approach to learning science. And so, we're already noticing a difference in what the teachers are doing in the science labs and in their classroom with regards to science. So that's been wonderful. As Dr. Toscano was talking about Foundations, I should mention the Wilson Program. Our AIS teachers are providing Wilson instruction to students that need more targeted phonics and phonemic awareness instruction using Wilson. We also have the reading teachers at Harley who are using another Orton-Gillingham approach to teaching phonics and phonemic awareness, plus we use leveled literacy intervention in our tier-two and tier-three intervention programs. Both buildings, as you know, have a Makerspace, but the difference this year is that we have embedded the Makerspace into our weekly or monthly schedules. So all children are going to the Makerspace, and they have specific Makerspace lessons, so they're involved in STEAM and creativity and problem-solving and teamwork. We have after-school literature clubs in both buildings. We have new grammar books, which helps with consistency, coherence across grades three, four, and five. We've ordered Book Club books, which is an enhancement to TC. So we have varying-level book clubs to support our units of study. That's also been successful. And we have many parent resources, which we are constantly revising and editing, study guides in our curriculum maps, students taking home books, as Dr. Hall had mentioned, our AIS progress reports, and...
And just one last thing, I wanted you to know that the Envisions homework program actually has a QR code. So when the students go home with their homework assignment, if they don't understand it, the parent can watch a video and then reteach it to them.
Thank you all for this comprehensive overview of iReady data and the tools, the sub-tools, and all the data and everything that we're able to disaggregate and bring into the classroom and benefit our students. It's really, it's a wonderful tool when used correctly, and it's wonderful to see that we're not only using it correctly, we're using it to a whole other level. We're bringing it on all different grade levels, to all different students, and we're hitting the mark and surpassing it. So thank you all for your hard work, to the teachers who are in the trenches doing this. iReady is, it's a program we got to buy into. It's not something you just flip open the computer and you're sold on. You got to really understand the ins and outs and the intricacies of it. So kudos to everybody who was a part of that, to the buy-in, for the overview to get everybody there. It's not easy, so, and we're seeing the growth. We're seeing the students move in the right direction, we're being above the average norm. And, you know, although the big harp is the kids lost a lot of instruction due to the pandemic, and we were closed, and they did lose an in-person connection, does kind of show that being virtual worked to an extent. It wasn't perfect, it wasn't optimal, but the students didn't have huge gaps in Elwood. That's not the case for everybody. And I know we talked about the national norm, and there might have been disparaging data from students who didn't have technology available to them. We were fortunate that we do have that in Elwood. So it's nice to see we're a little below, we're on the mark, and we're going past it. So thank you all. I know this discussion, sorry. I'm done.
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank you so much for that wonderful presentation, and I was really happy to see that not only were you gathering the data and the kids had to, you know, do that in front of the screen, but then, when you showed your slides about the kids, like, you know, being more, you know, in small groups and talking to each other without those screens, like, I like seeing the picture of the kids not in front of the screen. So I really liked seeing that, and thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much for the detailed data. You know, I really appreciate, you know, including E&amp;L and socially disadvantaged students. Just a couple of quick questions. For parents at home, can you just explain real quickly how they can access their son or daughter's iReady score on the portal? Because I think, you know, a lot of parents ask me, "How do I see it? How do I see it?" Can you just give a quick, where do they need to click to see their child's iReady score?
Yes. So we began posting the iReady results in the parent portal this year. So our fall reports went up in October, and the parents have to go to the Assessment tab. And when they click on the Assessment tab, there's going to be some words that appear in the upper left, and if they have three-through-eight ELA results, those will be there as well. And we're also bringing in the New York State ESL Achievement Test, the NICE slot results in there. So our idea is that we'll have the iReady, the NICE slot, the New York State assessments available. So they're clicked, they click that Assessment tab, and it's right in the middle of their screen, Assessment tab, and then they have to go to the upper left, they have to click on iReady, then you'll see a dropdown for math and reading, and they have to click into each one individually. We're hearing that it doesn't necessarily open on an iPhone, so they might have to be on a laptop or a computer to view it. And if they have any difficulties, they should absolutely contact the building, or they can contact our technology department, and we'll make sure, like, we've sent a few home for some parents who did not have a laptop available and wanted to see the PDF of it.
Good. And I know you said iReady is not the end-all for data. How did it compare to our math results? You know, I know we had a multiple opt-outs, but did you see any connection between the math state testing and the iReady scores?
I think there is, there's so many gaps still with math, because we still have anywhere from twenty to forty percent of the students not taking the exam, that it's a little hard, because it might be, who opts their children out? Like, there's an understanding that sometimes a student, like, we're looking at the economically disadvantaged, who may not have access to all of the news that goes out. So are those children the ones who are testing the most? So it's hard to say that there's an even comparison. So we've looked at our ELA and math data, and we evaluate them individually, separate from the iReady. What we ask overall is for a well-taken point of validity and reliability, and our teachers seeing that the iReady performance is aligning to student performance, with the idea that it's a totally different scale, because it's not that mastery, it's that growth toward. So I don't know if our principals want to say anything else about feedback you're getting about how people are feeling about its reliability.
I think the fact that now that they're doing the individualized platform, the data is becoming deeper, right? It's not only a shallow diagnostic, now it's a weekly diagnostic that we can keep looking at for information.
Thank you. Thank you. Like, I really appreciate it. I know this takes a lot of work to put together, so thank you so much for providing this information to the community.
So, technology can be a blessing and a curse, but clearly, this seems to be working out in our favor. The data that you guys are pulling from this is simply amazing, and I'm just thrilled that we happen to be above, you know, the national norm, and we are very close in most cases, being above pre-pandemic, and in many cases, we are above pre-pandemic. So, kudos to a great presentation, and thank you all for the support and mentoring all the staff, and, you know, students are showing success, so thank you so much.
Thank you. We all very much appreciate your support, as always, and I know our teachers do as well. And one of the interesting things is that we're in the midst of phasing in mandatory computer testing for the three-through-eight ELA, and the skill of writing sentences on computer is a different brain access than when you're using pen and paper. So the other thing that we appreciate is that the Personal Learning Platform is allowing students to have regular interaction on the computer while still preserving rich time for in-person activities that are face-to-face. So it's allowing us to kind of prepare for that as well. But thank you all for your supportive comments. We greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Tomio, may I just offer some closing comments? First of all, thank you very much to the principals, Dr. Hall, and the curriculum team for not only putting together the presentation, but implementing a new program with fidelity. I think that this helps to demonstrate that our faculty has embraced this tool and this platform that really helps give keen insight as to where those learning gaps might be. To further answer Mr. Scroll's question, the state assessment data, I'm not sure, has been valuable to us for some time, not only due to the opt-out, but because of the lack of the alignment between the assessments and the instruction taking place in the classroom. And I think that this being added to our multiple measures for student assessment really has allowed our faculty to give targeted intervention where it's needed to the students who need it the most. And I think that we have wonderful supports available to address those learning gaps. To Mr. Tomio's point, we wouldn't expect our students to achieve and excel at the same level during pandemic times when their learning was disrupted and we had to move to remote and hybrid instruction. But it is refreshing to see that the gaps that students experienced in Elwood were not as sustained or as dramatic as students who may have not had the same opportunities we provided our students here. And I think, as Mr. Tomio said, it's a credit to our faculty, a credit to the leadership who put the programs together, and I wanted to say thank you for your continued efforts and support of our students. And while you're here, before we dismiss you to go enjoy yourself, I do want to point out to the board that Dr. Toscano has added a daughter-in-law to her family, as her son had a wonderful wedding in Cooperstown, New York just a few weeks ago, and we congratulate her. Ms. Milan looks ready to drop because she has a sick one-year-old son at home, who, I'm sorry, said without permission, and I'm sure the sleepless nights have not been helpful to you, but while you're both here, and the Board of Education is present, and I know Mrs. Weiss is watching remotely, I want to thank you both. You have had a wonderfully smooth transition to your new roles in your new buildings. It is very easy in a professional journey to do what is comfortable. You volunteered to do something uncomfortable that brought with it new challenges but new opportunities. And I think that has been embraced by the community, certainly by the faculties you're working with, and certainly the students who get to enjoy your company every day. So I want to thank you and compliment you to the wonderful start to the year you've both had in your new roles, and we look forward to continue working with you in the new capacity.
Thank you both, and Dr. Hall, thank you as well. And that brings us up to our donations this evening. We have a bunch. Dr. Siddiqui, if you wouldn't mind?
Good evening, everyone. We would like to, the Board of Education would like to thank for the following donations. The, oh, the first, who is the first one from the support?
There's the Booster Club, yeah.
Oh, okay, they're all from the Booster. Okay. So, yes, we're really thankful for the Elwood Booster Club, as they support so many programs and so many after-school clubs that are offered at Harley and Boyd. So they're donating three thousand two hundred and eighty dollars to support the Boyd Makerspace Club, Boyd Math Club, Harley Makerspace Club, Harley Literacy and Craft Club, and the Harley Math Club. These clubs are essential for our students, and I'm so thankful that we have these offerings that the Elwood Booster Club is sponsoring. They're also donating nine hundred and ninety-five dollars to purchase a bleacher enclosure curtain for the John Glenn High School. Is that, okay, is that on in the gymnasium? Oh, the side of the bleachers, okay. Ah, yes, that's very essential, actually. That's a good thing. Thank you. And thank you for, to the Elwood SEPTA. And Elwood SEPTA, if, for the members of the community that don't know, is an amazing Special Education Parent Teacher Association, and they do so many great things for our community. So they're donating five hundred dollars to support the John Glenn High School Unified Basketball League, which was the inaugural first year last year, and had an amazing, amazing year. And also, this year, we're going to, the Elwood SEPTA is donating five hundred dollars to support the Unified Bowling League, which, from what I understand, this is the inaugural year for that. We're very excited about that, and I look forward to attending some of those games. And the Elwood SEPTA also is donating five hundred dollars to support fees for a guest speaker, Rohan Murphy. And if you don't follow or support SEPTA, I encourage you to do so, and look at their website, because they do offer a lot of programming for our students and parents and everybody in the community. So thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Siddiqui. And to piggyback off of SEPTA, I'll give them a shameless plug right now. They are accepting donations for their bowling fundraiser, which is finally back after the pandemic, so I know they're looking for donations. And if you are free the night of the event, it is a well-attended, fun evening, and definitely take a look at their website to find out more information. So with that, I have a motion for the following, all that Dr. Siddiqui just said for donations. Motion, Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Momalito. All in favor? Four-zero. All righty. Ms. Marks, as I said, four-zero. To reflect the minutes, I might have said five-zero all night, because I'm just so used to it, so I hope you were not writing five-zero after I've made that mistake. I'm used to five. All right. Ms. Weiss is virtual, so she's kind of five. And with that, we're up to our consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety this evening. Motion, Mr. Scroll, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Four-zero. And with that, we're up to our second resident. And with that, we're up to our second residence remarks. Seeing no residents, we will move on. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Oh, sorry. Pulling it back, yep.
I just wanted to take a moment to let the community know that we'll be adding a legislative committee date on the calendar that didn't exist before. We are going to be meeting on November the thirtieth at 5:00 PM, right here in the Elwood Middle School Library. I penned a letter regarding the COVID vaccinations. Now that we know who our elected officials are, so it's time to start talking to all of our new electeds.
All right, thanks, Momalito. And there wasn't much change, I guess, with the election, so we'll pick right up with where we left off with them. All right, with that, a motion to adjourn. Motion, Mr. Skrola, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui, all in favor, four-zero. Good evening, happy Thanksgiving. Thanks to all those veterans who serve and protect our country. We are appreciative and supportive of tomorrow, and thank you, veteran, not only tomorrow, but every day. Good night.